Okay, here we go, gang. Wow. This is a meeting of Athens City Council. Tonight, we're going to be meeting, there'll be two committee meetings. One of the Planning and Development Committee and another meeting for the Finance and Personnel Committee. Just a couple of quick announcements. Tomorrow, in this room, will be the Athens City Thanksgiving Luncheon. We're all invited. We're all invited to bring a dish of some kind.
Is it a costume party?
And, but...
You can dress up as turkey.
The city's going to provide...
The basics, turkey, stuffing.
Gravy.
Gravy.
Hot water.
No potatoes.
No potatoes.
No potatoes.
Except not gravy.
Okay.
I'm bringing potatoes too. What do you bring?
Well, they'll need more than one.
Okay.
Okay, so, they need potatoes.
No, we don't need...
They need more than two!
I think so.
Okay. Okay. And also, on Friday, December 13th, at the Community Center, again, at 11:30, is the Employee Recognition Luncheon, where we take some time to recognize many of the, a lot of the very outstanding people we have working for us in the city. It's a, it's a good thing to come to. You don't have to bring any cover dishes. So, but please let Rhonda at the front desk, let her know that you're coming, just to, so they can have an accurate count. Friday, December 13th, 11:30 a.m. Do we have any other quick announcements? If not, we'll go on to Planning and Development Committee.
Thank you. I have one thing on the agenda tonight. The Planning Commission, the Athens City Planning Commission, has forwarded a recommendation for a lot split out within the three-mile zoning jurisdiction that we have. It's out on Salem Road, Zero Salem Road. And with this lot-split recommendation is included a variance for access for the new lot that will be created, or both lots to be created, and paperwork with the easement and the miscellaneous requirements within the real estate contract that would be needed to ensure that this easement is deeded, put into the deed, in the record of deeds. And it passed the Planning Commission unanimously. So, do Planning Commission members have anything to add?
No, not really.
No, of note, it is adjacent to some property that the Conservation, Conservancy District has already obtained. And there's nothing that we can apply to this land, other than the hopes that if further negotiations, that they can continue on, on the Moonville Trail development.
Right. Okay. Any questions from council? Pretty straightforward. So, that will be brought up next week as an ordinance to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. We do have one miscellaneous agenda item. Michelle has some information that is a concern, having to do with fracking.
I was just wanting to mention, the 29th of November is the deadline, if you want to mention any comments to send about the barging waste. And I didn't know, Mayor, if you had followed up on that letter.
No, I hadn't had a chance. Okay. Deadline for that.
Right. Well, the 29th is Friday, and Thanksgiving is Thursday, so, I mean, I don't know the likelihood, but maybe as individuals, people can decide to, because we can't have a resolution, we can't do anything like that. It's too late.
Okay.
And the other issue was the injection wells. If we wanted to do a resolution for next Monday, when reading resolution regarding the injection well issue. So, I'm just throwing that out to the rest of council.
I think we have another resolution that we've done before.
We've done it in the past.
So, it can be a, you know, kind of template with letting people know our concerns, especially with drinking water and public health and safety.
And would you kindly remind us, Michelle, was that, remember Pappy, was that with requests for the EPA to be involved? Is that correct?
We could, we could do the resolution that way, if those of us here thought that was the thing to do, asking for primacy, taking away the primacy from ODNR.
That may be a separate, I would, I would encourage that to be a separate resolution.
From the K&amp;H Two Well?
Yeah. Because that's a larger issue, making sure, because of problems, outstanding problems that ODNR seemed to have with permitting and regulating and monitoring of wells and such. And what was shocking this weekend from the earthquake was the maps of how many wells are already there and are being permitted. I was, I was shocked. That is just an amazing amount.
For our region.
For our region. We don't produce any gas and oil right now from fracking, but we are being the dump site, you know, kind of. And if they're not monitored, and there's, you know, not only the wells themselves, but also all the truck traffic and such. So, I think that people should have their eyes completely opened with those maps that were put forward, so.
I would certainly support a resolution, certainly in light of ODNR's failure to recognize that it's a concern when we have seismic activity in a region that is rife with these injection wells, be they currently in use or already mothballed, or whatever the correct term is. I mean, clearly, if you go down in your basement and look at some of the cracks in your basement walls, imagine what would happen if that basement were a well full of toxic waste. Not saltwater, toxic waste, toluene, benzene, and other frightening chemicals. So, certainly, any resolution, I think we should ask for a halt to injection wells and for better regulation.
And you have to wonder, a little earthquake like that was not a lot, but when you say you've got a nice little thread of concrete going all the way down a mile, or whatever it is, depending on the shale level or the level of injection. I could think of those long, thin pieces of spaghetti that just got shook up. Probably no cracks in any of the concrete there, though.
No.
And of course, there was a discussion about how many regulator, how many inspectors that the state has right now, for its 16,000 wells that they have throughout the state. You know, there's, what, 48 inspectors? And the gas and oil industry says, "Oh, that's fine." And you got to figure, you know, and they said, "Well, you don't want, you know, as many inspectors as you do restaurants." And one should point out that they have enough inspectors to inspect restaurants at least once a year. So, you know, it's, this is getting more and more, if it was not so important, it's almost humorous, how, you know, just being dumped on. So, I see two resolutions. One for the EPA, taking the primacy back from the state, making sure that the EPA can regulate better all these things. And the second one, again, specifically the K&amp;H Two...
K&amp;H Two.
The K&amp;H Two Resolution we're putting in, so.
Okay.
I want to echo what Member Cochran was just saying, in terms of the wells themselves. And I'm wondering if it might be prudent to put a line within whatever resolution, either one or both, saying that, you know, inspection should be done if there's any seismic activity anywhere, you know, something to that effect. I don't know, you have to wordsmith something in there, but something that would be, you'd expect there to be, a 100% inspection of any well within X number of miles of the epicenter, since the epicenter was 10 miles north of where we're sitting right now.
Well, I mean, theoretically, they should follow our example in putting of monitoring and mitigation plans, and for each individual well, and inspecting it, putting in identifiable markers within each well, the ability for county people to look at what's going into the well, and having testing well fluids, so that we know how to have first responders, being able to tell first responders what's being put into those. And it's kind of pathetic what the state does, you know, and it can be a whole lot better, so.
I'd certainly support two resolutions. I wonder if there's any value in pushing the one forward now about the particular injection well, and then maybe waiting a while on the EPA.
Fine. Just have to add the different well and that kind of thing. I just want to comment as well, we are elected, and our administration is here, and one of, you know, our main issues that we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis is health and safety. And that map, again, whoever brought up the idea of the map, I think that was, it is when you see visually where the five injection wells are that are taking the hydraulic fracturing fluid. And I think of our neighbors there on the Vinton County, Athens County line, and there's several wells, and that's where the Tennessee Gas Line goes through there. And I think, wow, you know, A, that's a lot of truck traffic, but B, in terms of, you know, if a spill happened there, how detrimental that would be, you know. So, I, it's, I just don't see how we can just sit back and say nothing, City Council. And there were several about the Olem Creek and the drill waste going into a facility up there. And I think people are becoming much more educated about what is going on and asking questions. And that's, I feel that is our role as well, as public servants and elected people, is to get the information out there. And people will make whatever decision they choose to make, but I think the, getting the information out there is important. And we also have more and more scientific people speaking on it, which is good to see. So, thank you.
Member Pappy, member Paul, the two of you who can put something together with help that needs to be...
Right.
Okay.
That's all I have for miscellaneous.
Okay, we're going to move on, then, to the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our biggest item for discussion tonight is the 2014 budget. And for those of you who have been either watching council meetings or here in the audience participating, you've seen over the past few weeks that Auditor Heck has been helping us with looking at our projections on income tax. The Treasurer was here last week also, talking to us about interest income, which is up slightly this year. And if I'm remembering correctly, Kathy from your, Auditor Heck, from your earlier reports, that our income tax is up slightly this year, but that is in part due to the collections that we've been working with, with what's called the CCA, the Cleveland Collection Agency, to help us identify some previously unpaid income taxes. So, we've been looking at these projections for the General Fund. We've been looking at, and meanwhile, the city staff has also been looking at fees for services that we receive, such as water, sewer code, solid waste, the community center, the parking garage, and grants. And the administration has delivered, and council members have a copy of our budget, first draft of it for 2014. It is draft at this point. We're under reviewing it. We are also, I think cognizant of the fact that we have to have the final number on our certified resources and being, and reviewing these things in the next coming weeks. The goal would be, then, for us to have a first reading of this budget ordinance by, I believe, the next week.
First reading's next week.
Yep. And so that we can move this on through in December and have the budget for 2014 passed before the end of the fiscal year. Historically, you might note that in 2011, our budget was approximately $30 million. In 2013, then, it, this last budget was up to $34 million. And I believe some of that was probably due to some of our larger grants that were coming through. We had the OXPO, we had probably the tail end of the roundabout, first design costs for the, for our wastewater treatment plant improvements. And then in 2014, the draft that the mayor has distributed for our first initial discussion tonight is $33,763,182. And parts of this come from different sources. I refer to the General Fund, and that is primarily salary and fringe, and that is, of that 33 million...
It's actually 34. You've got two pages there.
Thirty-four, 763.
The legal is this year, next year's, the header is 014513.
Thirty-four, 413, excuse me.
And the other one behind it was just the letter side of this, last year, so you have to pass.
And so, approximately 13 million of this 34 million is in general funds, and then the rest comes from specialized accounts and grants and proprietary funds that we bring in during the year from different fees. So, I think without further ado, I'll turn it over to Auditor, Mayor, and other comments. And I realize council members are looking at this for the first time, so there might be some preliminary questions. Do know that the auditor and staff and Finance Committee members will be looking at this in more detail for several hours this week at our auditor's meeting on Wednesday, to go through it in some, some more detail. Mayor?
There, I really didn't want to dig into this too much, just the first view of this. Of course, you see, the General, the General Fund, of course, is running about 13.4, almost 13.5 million. If you notice, it's about 78% of it is personnel, the rest of it is spread among debt, service, as well as supplies and capital. I put very little capital in there because we're not sure how that, that number, 13 million, is going to be actually funded. If you looked at your, our certified revenues that you, balances, that you received November 18th, that covers most of the certified amended resources. And I know we're going to whittle it down, we're going to have to whittle it down a little bit. I'm working with, again, the auditor's office to fine-tune this. There's a lot of different fund lines, and I'm sure I've made a few mistakes along the way. The rest of it, further down below, of course, is the different departments, again, covering both personnel as well as services. Some of the capital outlay that's been put in place there has to do with what we anticipate, you know, the wish list. I essentially polled most of my departments and said, you know, "What do you want to see? What would you like to have?" They're not going to get everything they want. Some of them have good, good arguments for trying to preserve that. And it comes down, again, to what the resources look like coming back in. We don't know the carryover yet, because we haven't whittled down the appropriations. That'll take some time. I'm going to say, I just let you know, I did do it in color, and that little red thing there was, has nothing to do with negative numbers. I had somebody calling me, freaked out about that, but the fact is, it really just has to do with the fact that that was, somewhere around 11, you know, hour 11 or 10, I start just putting these in and saying, "Okay, these I want to go back and look at." And as I go back and look at it, I switch colors on it. Many people look at that number red as being in the red, but it's just so I could say, "Okay, that needs to be whittled down." And you can see there's quite a chunk in there in terms of the capital outlay, both for the recreation and the community center operations. And again, there's, there's a list of these things. There's some things I still haven't added. I just received the IT wish list and estimates there. So, that being said, I don't know what else I need to add, or what questions I need to field. And again, I gave you last year's appropriation ordinance, and if you were to go back and look at your monthly statements, you'll realize that every time you do an appropriation, amending this particular ordinance, the numbers change. If you were to go back into your monthly statements and look at the revenues and expenditures, you'd see a whole different number than those. So, it's a movable numbers budget at that time.
So, looking at the Water Fund and...
Okay, Water Fund, yeah.
And the Sewer Fund. So, there's those two numbers that are up to the side there.
That is the total, oh, okay. That essentially is the total of all three departments. You have a Water Fund, a Maintenance Administration, and Plant.
I see.
So, if you add all those together, you'll come up with...
Okay, with that total. Okay.
But it's not negative.
It's not negative, no.
It's just...
And the same thing applies to Sewage Maintenance Fund. I believe we talked about the water, fees are going to go up, I think?
Three percent, January 1st.
Three percent?
But again, we're siding a new well this year, 2014. So, I do not believe his capital improvement for that is in here, so that we're going to have to come and seek appropriations for that. The only capital item that Andy put in there, I believe, was the street sweeper and streets.
There's a track code, too. He's spread out between, basically, a front-end loader, they spread out between sew, streets, sewer, and water, 1/30 each. So, that's the 25,000 that's in the, in the capital line there. You'll see it in, it should be in each one, I think, unless I missed one here.
And basically, this morning, we told staff, "I don't see how the 13, almost 13.5, is going to be sustainable." We'll wait until we hear what the estimated revenues are. And that some of this capital outlay is going to have to be reduced, and that we'll just have to come back and see where the financing is for some of the, if Rich, the planners recently sent out the Arts Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and it speaks about how you have to upgrade equipment, and I understand that, I think we all do, but I asked him to look at phasing, kind of go back, look at it, and do the wish list a little bit more like that. What can we do next year? What can we do the following year and kind of reach that?
Is Richland Avenue included in this?
He likes to come back to get all those appropriations.
At the same time as authorization, so he doubles...
So, there will be more, but there'll be that associated grant revenue with Richland South, so.
And we do, if I'm remembering correctly, we do have the grant, grants in place to begin that.
We do. There's still going to be a local component. Same thing with the Public Works. We were expecting $400,000 in grants.
They cut it back about 5% to spread the money around between the counties. That was last week. Again, that'll go towards the West Union Project that's in place, and that's not, that's not reflected in the schedule. But that's money coming in. I believe the total bill for that's another 100 or 200,000 above that. I think the total was almost 600?
Oh, yes. But there's a water component, and then a street component, maybe some storms, so...
All right. So, historically, just to review the numbers correctly, and I apologize for quoting the wrong ones, that that is the present budget that we're operating under was, and Mayor Wile has provided that with us, is $33,763. And that this one, this draft one that we're looking at now for next fiscal year is $34,508. Yes, member Paul?
I know we've talked a lot about the income tax bill that's in legislation right now. And how is that going to impact it? Because we're not going to know the real wording of that and the full impact until...
Right. Some of the things we can predict very accurately, like the net operating loss carried forward. Other things, I don't know how we would begin to try to figure out how the 12-day rule of being extended to 20 days would affect us. So, yes, until it's in place, we won't really know. And I, it looks like our, our tax revenue is going to be pretty flat next year anyway. Even, we won't have that bump from CCA, even though we will have some additional revenue because of that, we won't have the big bump we got this year. So, yeah, our revenue is pretty flat, and then that could hurt us even more. As you know, we've already lost half a million dollars from other state cuts, so. However, looking at this, I think the mayor did a good job. I mean, this is not a huge increase over last year's budget, and so he's, I think, done a pretty good job trying to hold the line. We've had some debt that we've paid down and paid off and things like that. We're pretty good about keeping up with that, so that helps on that side.
At one point, I think it would be good for the city to tote up how much Columbus has, is costing us. Because basically, what I'm seeing in this budget and last year's budget is that they're putting a lot more pressure on local taxpayers and keeping, you know, general funds in Columbus and keeping it for whatever...
Oh, they absolutely are. They absolutely are.
And so, I think that people in Athens need to know that, because it puts a strain on what we can provide and what we ask for from various people, from the taxpayers.
And, you know, so... And that was highlighted this afternoon, when Tina Timberman, our income tax administrator and Auditor Heck, and the mayor had a press conference on saying, and you're saying now, so the local revenue loss, when Governor Kasich came in, the local revenue funds were cut by 50%, I believe, and then they've been cut additionally, so half a million...
Yeah, those are going to be down another 40,000 this year. They've been going down for the last...
Right. And then the loss of the estate tax. In previous years, there's sometimes been up to, what, maybe $200,000 of income?
Almost 300,000.
300 for the city. So, and then if the...
Personal property. So, there's a combination of cuts we've gotten from the state, nothing to make up for that.
Right. Cuts and grants, some, you know, like the capital.
Right.
So, I mean, all we're getting is cuts and reductions in funds that come back. I mean, a lot of these funds are generated by not Columbus, and, you know, they're generated locally, and they're just, it's like the giant sucking sound up in Columbus. And I, you know, quite frankly, I really don't know what they're doing with it. They say that they're doing, you know, being able to do something, but we're not seeing it down here, so...
No, not at all.
No.
Well, and I think the administration, and not, you know, not to minimize what's happened, our cuts, but I know that when you did the budget several years ago, you were anticipating the local revenue cuts. So, what we've been able, I'm thankful for, is that we've taken, I think, financially conservative, a very careful and cautious approach, saying, "We anticipate that we might not see these revenues," or that we're going to continue to see the cuts. So, that's helpful. The other thing that, to keep in mind, too, is that at some point, we may want to look at how we split the income tax. And you might recall that that's a mix, so that of our income tax, 15% comes off the top for street rehab and community center and rec center. And then the remaining 85% is split amongst various components in our budget. So, in 2012, we changed that mix. So, of the remaining 85%, after the 15 comes off the top, 73% goes to the General Fund, 19 to street, 5 to recreation, 2 to capital, and 1 to transportation. It was that point, for the first time, that we moved forward with that transportation in support of Athens Transit. So, we may, you know, with your advice and counsel, may want to be reviewing that mix, if we have to adjust, so that we have sufficient funds in the General Fund, because that's, that's the salary and fringe, and that's 77% of our budget, I think, at least, probably over 70%.
Yeah. Right. And that's what happened in 2004, when I first came into office as auditor, is we had to ask for a tax mix change at the end of the year, retroactive, so that we could make our obligations, in the General Fund particularly, so. Yeah, so that, that decrease of 1% in the General Fund from, for this year, might have an effect on, on us next year, and that we might have to make that up somehow, and changing that tax mix might be it.
Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Is it fair to say, and this is for all of us collectively to consider, is it fair to say, from the auditor and mayor's experience, as well as us on council, we may have to start getting a little more creative on revenue generating if the state continues to make these cuts? Is that a fair assessment or a fair comment?
Yes, I think so. I think we need to pay attention to all of the areas in the city where we, we generate revenue. As you know, there are quite a few of them, very few of them are self-supporting through that revenue and are, you know, subsidized by our tax money. Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
Yeah, I, I think I mentioned this before to you. I think it'd be helpful if you could produce something like a pie chart to show what's coming in and where it's going out, just so that it's a visual representation that people can look at, say, "Oh, yeah, now I understand where the money's coming from, and, oh, yeah, well, I didn't realize so much money was going there." Yeah. Or, why so few dollars are going to this thing or that? Yeah, I, I can cross to a spreadsheet with the best of anybody. I really don't need charts. I can, I know where, what's happening, but I get a lot of questions from people in my neighborhood, like, you know, "What are you guys doing with all that money?"
Well, I think sometimes it's that whole proprietary versus, you know, more discretionary funds.
Right.
So, we can add that to that, too.
Well, you know, if most of our money's going for salaries, you know, you look at that, and you go, "Well, you know, that's kind of hard to cut, isn't it?" I mean, if we could get into a crunch, and we could, and we're going to say, have to say, "Well, we got to make some cuts here, folks." No one wants to do that, but where are you going to make them? I mean, whose pothole do we not fill? You're going to have to be selective on that. Which neighborhood doesn't get fixed this year or next year, because the dollars aren't there? And then you say, "Well, we just don't have the revenue." Why can't you generate it? "Well, how about a tax increase?" "Oh, no, I'm not too crazy about that." "No, no, if I had to pay for it, I don't want it." Well, it's, you know, people, it's like I say, it's all educational. You have to show people... I say, it's all educational. You have to show people where, where it's going, where it's coming from. Cause I, I hear a lot of misinformation out there. I have one neighbor says, well, I don't understand. You, you have that property tax.
[laughing]
And I'm going, what property tax? We don't have a property tax. Yeah, the county has a property tax.
I don't, I don't, it's...
And, and that's school tax. Yeah, all this stuff that goes around. And it'd just be nice to say, well, okay, I'm glad you brought that up. I just have, have this right here.
That, that would probably be helpful. I think it would, because people see things or understand things, you know, in, in different ways.
Right. And I, we could put this on the website, and it's, it's North City, Arizona. No one's going to take into this, you know, uh, but...
There's some of us who get alarmed at red numbers, yeah. Council member Butler.
Yeah, and, and along those lines, or to echo, echo, um, member Reisner's comments, uh, my understanding, interestingly enough, is that we haven't seen a tax increase on income since the eighties. Am I correct? And that's, that's all...
We did a one-year overlap for the street, one year.
Right.
Or, you know, a tenth of a percent.
Right. And so I'm sure that hasn't kept up with the, the cost of living adjustments.
Well, and I think that really goes back. Let's loop this back to what we were discussing earlier with your press conference today, because we are not the only municipality that is going to have to deal with this. And people are going to have to figure out how to generate revenue. And, well, I'll just move over there. They didn't raise their taxes, or it's too expensive to live here. It's, it, it's really going to mushroom. The effects are, are going to mushrooms.
Today we had mirrors from Belpre, Marietta, tax accountants from Chillicothe, Zanesville, what were the other ones there?
Lancaster.
Mayor of Lancaster. There's a, you know, they're all concerned.
Yeah.
Pomeroy, I believe, was here too. Up and down, you know, basically around this area, just saying, you know, we are, they came here for a reason, because they're concerned of what the, the hit's going to be. And our tax administrator has a, a pretty good idea of what our prop situation is, but a lot of them don't.
There are, like I said, items filled in there that, that there's no way, you can't lose money on them.
Right.
You don't even have to know how much. So who's to say, you know, 60,000 is okay for Athens to lose, you know, or 50,000 or, you know, 100,000 is too much, you know? We just really can't afford any revenue loss if we can't help it.
Well, and there's the changes from, the tax law changes also that are taking effect, you know, for, from the two, the new two-year budget, which I think are the, people are going to be shocked at what they have done with tax law in Columbus. And it's another great sucking sound from, you know, poorer areas to areas that seem to be doing fine, you know? Rollbacks and things that they are doing, and it's going to hit the schools, it's going to hit us, it's going to hit the county. So, you know, I think that people should keep an eye out and, um, see, you know, where the real crunch is coming from. It's not that we're extravagant and we're hiring gazillions of people. So we're being just hammered by this, you know? So do it the speed of business sort of mentality.
Well, and we've been fortunate on some of our, uh, public works in the streets, and we've been fortunate with getting grants and things like that. But again, we don't know how long that's going to be. The reason that we can fix the streets and do a lot of other than just maintenance kind of things, because we have been getting some kind of grants, but they are cutting back on those as well. And who knows how long those will continue as well.
And we still need to be able to come up with our match. I mean, it's well worth it if we can, but if we get to a point where we can't come up with our share, then...
And they may increase, increase match requirements.
Actually, that's why the complaints you have with smaller villages, they do not have the ability to match all the grants that they, that we chase. Um, to get back to the budget stuff, um, we're hoping that it might be an uptake with all the construction that Ohio University's doing. Um, I will mention in passing that the, this, the budget submitted by Lands and Buildings tops out somewhere around 400,000 for various, uh, repairs that need to be done around the city, whether it's, uh, the Mansfield House roof to, uh, the, I think the doors on some of the service garages and, uh, Lord Administration Building needing a boiler and furnace, uh, revamps. So I did not, I did not put those in there, but those were in, in the mix as well. Um, let's see, what's the other one that's coming at us?
Yep, parking garage.
Parking garage. We're actually having a meeting tomorrow with, uh, another engineering firm to kind of do a complete overview of that and the elevator repairs at the same time. But again, we'd have to come to you for additional appropriations beyond what's budgeted here, so.
Is that included for our escape?
That's, um...
That's supposed to be done soon, isn't it?
Right. They're going to, once they have, it was being manufactured, they'll deliver it on-site. They say, I'll be up and out of here within 48 hours, so that's what they claim.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll continue with the discussions and the report of the draft ordinance, uh, for the budget for 2014 next week, then at full council. And as part of that, as we move towards finalizing the budget, I did want to update fellow council members to let them know that we are looking at the staffing and pay scale and also non-union fringe benefits. There's a draft document at this point that's under review. Um, some of the language in that is, are, um, updates so that we're in compliance, so that the language reflects legislation that city council may have passed, or in some cases, um, Family Medical Leave Act, uh, so that we're in compliance with federal regulations, as well as looking at some other, um, items. So we'll be back to you with a, a report on that after we've met further with the auditor's meeting this week, with more, some more details. Two miscellaneous items. One is from auditor Hacks that we need an appropriation of $15,000 for community center personnel. So we'll leave that need has been identified so that we are able to pay staff from now till the, to the end of the year. So we'll have that moving forward in an appropriation ordinance. And then the one item that I'd like to come back and revisit tonight, uh, it, it has to do with the, uh, discussion about council chamber renovations and some updates on that. Uh, council member Butler, I think you had inquired as to whether the unit was American-made, and we were able to confirm that the components are American-made.
Oh, wonderful.
Um, part of the difficulty with our thinking about trying to do this within the next, you know, month, or, uh, was the difficulty of then finding, um, time for people to be able to remove some of the existing equipment, if it, or the dais, if, uh, if this would be approved. Uh, and we have not been able to locate a contractor. It's a day or a less work and would probably require a dumpster, so we haven't been able to locate anybody yet, um, to do that. Uh, so we're wanting to consider if it might delay for a while, if that might be something that could be, some, one option that was discussed last week was the possibility of using, um, city staff, but we knew that the time crunch was such that it couldn't be this year. We understand that, so...
Um, Debbie reached out to me today. I have not had a chance to get with, um, George and Volson and Lands and Buildings, so we will be meeting tomorrow anyway regarding the parking garage. I can, I can get back with you.
That would be great. That would be helpful.
And that was more looking at a January, February, some sort of timeframe in there.
Right. So the other item then, uh, for this area was carpeting. And the chambers carpet itself, the, uh, the amount needed for that is $6,420 for the carpeting in this room. And then if at the same time they decided to do the hallway, which is how it was done last time, then that would be an additional $2,105. So if you add that 6,420 in carpeting for the chambers, 2,100 for the hallway, 24,896 for the uniset construction, which includes the ramp, uh, that would be 33,421. Now, we do have, in this year already, $8,500 of capital funds unencumbered. So if we decided to move forward with it this year, that 33,421 total cost, if we wrapped it all together to do the hallway and these, the flooring in here, 33,000 less the 8,500 would mean that we would need 24,876 appropriated yet this year, if we wanted to appropriate and then figure out time to, to, to complete the job in January or February. Um, I think the main reason we're thinking about recommending now is two, two factors. And this is just, uh, for consideration. Number one, the money is in the, uh, ta- cable, um, access, all but I believe 500 dollars there, is in the cable access fund and franchise fee. So these are fees that are come in, they're, uh, have come in to the city, uh, and for use for cable kinds of activities, and this being the cable council room and also the planning commission and shade tree commission, what we discussed last week. Um, you know, use of the funds for that purpose would be, uh, I think we've all considered it would be appropriate. Um, so that would be the one reason. The second reason, uh, to consider it now is that the ordering of the actual, um, equipment, the tables and the ramp would take six weeks from the time of order until it can be constructed and delivered. It would only be a day for installation, but, um, it does take some time. So even if we ordered now, we'd be looking at next year, uh, for installation. So I wanted to open it back up for, for a little bit more discussion to see if we could, uh, how people are feeling about that, whether they think it's appropriate, whether they think it's reasonable for the use of those, uh, cable excite franchise fees.
Only thing I want to throw out there from a bookkeeping standpoint is we have to be careful. All appropriations die at the end of the year. And if we order this year, we can order this year, we just have to be careful. If we order this year and we know it's not going to be this year's, you know, um, it can be encumbered and carried over, but we have to be careful if we know, um, you know, what I mean. It's just...
Well, it'd be, so we would, if we appropriated this year and were able to make the order with the company, and is that part of a PO process?
No, that's a separate process that would have to be in place. Just appropriating it this year means nothing. It dies. And if you, you shouldn't order it until you know you have the money, which would, it mean you'd have to have a PO in place, which could be done, but you just got to be careful about that.
And then you'd have to do a PO.
Right. It would have to be in place for the entire amount. Otherwise, the money would have to be re-appropriated next year.
And we could put it in next year's budget. I mean, that would just require this mix right here that we're discussing.
That cable fund money isn't going anywhere because it's only cable fund money.
True.
But, um, but if you do order it, you need to have a PO in place.
Yep, you can get in the opposite trouble by ordering it and not having it, and then you have a past year PO.
So then and now.
That you come back before yourself.
Yes, I know.
But I think you can get that all accomplished.
Do you think, well, that's my next question. Do you think it's doable from your standpoint, from the auditors and, and...
If you have a firm number, what's it going to be? And you expect to, and it's, it's going to take that long, you may as well think about ordering it, I guess.
Council members, any concerns, comments?
No.
Yes?
So, so for the PO, we're talking about two different transactions. One would be for carpet, and the other would be for the dais. Basically, that's what we're talking about.
It could be, it could be on the same PO, but it would be different companies. Could be a multi-vendor, uh, be the same account line, different companies. Oh, yeah.
And then there's the demolition.
It works. We, yeah.
There's a demolition of the existing dais, which...
That's going to be done by the city? That's not a separate charge, or do we...
Perhaps.
As if we can afford the time. Again, there's always something going on.
And, and I don't know, this...
I'll take a swing.
This may be too much to throw at you tonight. But I've heard in the past, and the mayor has gone to other cities and come back and said, well, every council member has the iPad or the little tablet. And that, all that will take would be dollars as well to purchase, uh, each and every single council person, one would be under $10,000. You don't get a break with that certain company. They don't have a state bid any different than, you know, anywhere else.
We seem to be making do without them now.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Now, one thing we had talked about were the wireless microphones.
Mics?
Yeah. And that is not in this quote.
That could be acquired anytime, though.
But those could be acquired next year, I suppose. Uh, but the, but the one thing I would say is, is that Scott needs to, in a way, with his removing the carpet and then reinstalling, it, I think it would be better if he had a sense. Is Scott there? Nod to us, yes or no? Would it be better to know now, uh, about the wireless, or come on out and talk to us?
Of course.
Scott takes care of all the camera work for this. And, uh, thank you for us dragging you out of the control room.
The wireless microphones, we are working with our sound engineer company that we're working with, the Icon Console. There may be some headaches with that. Um, but we're trying to work out frequency ranges for this many mics. So until I know firm that I can put 14 mics in the room at the same time, I'm kind of on hold with that.
Okay.
So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. And it's, it's been a back and forth between us and the, and the company that are working with us.
So you would redo the tables then if we move forward with this, with the microphones that we have right now? And then if we find a solution later, then we could do that?
Yeah, until we get a firm answer on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to know.
Yes, council member Reisner?
I just want to get back to the iPad. The, um, reason I would be in favor of it, and the only, the main reason is that, uh, if we made a firm, absolute, 100% commitment to go paperless, I don't see any other way that you could really justify. It's a great thing, great tool to have there, but if I have the paper and the iPad and I'm looking back and forth, I, I really don't see how that improves anything. Now, over the long run, if you go paperless, it pays for itself, it's eco-friendly and so on. But, you know, I'm, I'm as geeky as anybody. I've made a living out of it for 35 years, but I also know, you know, where, when to use a pencil and paper and when to use a computer. So if it only worked if we made that commitment, and if, if at some point along the line, the paper starts creeping back in again, then we're, we're better off done by it.
Okay.
Throw that out there.
But thank you for the suggestion.
Sure.
Yep. Maybe that's a long-term goal.
And that might be something, right?
It probably should be, for all of us.
Yeah, I think for all of us.
It's amazing. And if, it would be great, because I think it would probably cost less in the long run.
But the only way to do that is you have to go cold turkey. You, you don't ease into going paperless. You just, either you do it or you don't. You know, it's like smoking. You don't sort of, well, I'll get myself six months to sort of wean myself. No, no, you either don't wean or you're not going to succeed, so.
It's like electronic records in healthcare.
Right.
You'd have to just fight the bullet.
Yeah. It's, it's awful, you know? Just serious withdrawal there.
You know, the interesting thing, just to share, is, you know, I have an iPad and I've tried it in here. And, I mean, you can use your iPad in here currently. And it is an interesting weaning process, quite honestly, to sit there and pull yourself off of the paper and go, okay, keep it out of my face. But, I mean, it's something that each one of us could individually pilot on your own to see how it works for you, or not work, and kind of go from there. I like the idea. Um, but again, I would almost take it a step further and say, if you want to have an iPad, purchase an iPad and use your iPad. But that's me.
So, any, any other questions of Scott? Well, he's here, before he goes back to the control room. Okay. And, uh, clerk of council Debbie Walker helped me with a, a very nice summary of the math of what was needed, um, on this, and what we have and what we need. Am I understanding right, though, that we do need five? We're in search of $500? You did add that in, okay. So, um, sense of fellow council members, proceed this year and work with auditor on POs and making sure the timing is right, wait till January 1, and incorporate it into the budget. We have two options.
So I have a question. Is the purchase order upon delivery or when you order? You have to have it placed when you order.
You should have a purchase order in place before you buy or order anything for the city.
So we would move next week with, we would put an ordinance out there and suspend it and, and order it, do the purchase order.
We could do that.
And maybe we just do the purchase order for the dais. I don't know, do we need everything done at that time?
Well, you really need the carpeting to come in first.
First, correct, right.
So you do need to be able to rip this out.
Yeah.
Destruction, carpeting, installation.
But it seems we don't have an answer on the, on the demo yet. Well, we will, in advance of your, any vote one day, yes. You think?
Let's give him a shot.
I'm in favor of, of having this go forward, you know, and looking and understanding things. I mean, number one, the dollars are there. Number two, it's essentially a one day for each one of those, one day to lay the carpet, one day, one day to demo the existing dais, one day to lay carpet, and one day to construct the new dais once it's here. So we're not talking about a long drawn-out period, but, I mean, to hustle and appropriate the funding.
Is the carpet really necessary to replace, though? I mean, I, that's...
Probably.
It's 12 years old.
There's nothing under there.
Yeah, if you move that, you're going to have...
Just moving down over there is enough for me to say, yeah.
I mean, I'm sitting on it. I mean, I'm sitting on it.
You are, including the hallway.
Yes.
So what are you going to do, match this carpeting with that carpeting?
It's the same, it's the same pattern.
Same pattern.
Yeah, but if you have, we're doing, one reason we're doing this is for ADA, and if you don't have a solid piece of carpeting, I think that that's not a very good safety sort of thing with ADA sort of thing.
That's true.
You want to speak, let's see, you know more about it than the rest of us?
With what the caller was just saying? Oh, absolutely. If you've got, yeah, if you've got ridges or ripples or anything, I mean, who knows? When we pull the carpet up, even when we tried to use the carpet that we're all sitting on right now and patch it into what's existing, you know, are we going to be 100% sure it's going to adhere? Are we using...
You probably use more ground with labor involved.
Right, carpets are sort of toxic and...
New carpet, you mean? Was that carpet in general?
New carpet.
Oh, okay.
I sense that there's general direction towards, let's move, have an appropriation next week.
Herd and cats.
Okay. I wouldn't say that, I'd just say everybody has an opinion about this, and it's been an interesting process. And...
We can please check the organic.
But we will wait to hear, too, from you, but we, but it sounds like we can move forward with an appropriation for the entire amount. We have the money, and I think we have the collective sense of moving forward with it. Okay, thank you. Are there any other miscellaneous items for finance and personnel?
We'll give...
No, but we reserve the right to identify one prior to next Monday.
Turkeys will be flying, we'll find out.
Thank you, I think we're conclusion.
Okay. With that, I just want to remind people again, tomorrow at 11:30 Thanksgiving luncheon, please bring something with you.
An empty bag.
There are two bowls of potatoes on the table right now, so anyone would be appreciated. And then, really, if you can only come to one luncheon, you really ought to come to the employee recognition luncheon.
Very nice.
11:30 Friday, December 15.
Okay.
Well done.
It is, wow, it's 7:53, and we are adjourned.
Okay.